...meeting of the City Council of Crescent City for January 21, 2014. We've just returned from closed session and I'd like to ask if there's anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final acts were taken in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll move to a call to order and roll call, please.
These buttons are a little sensitive, sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
It popped up.
That's okay.
Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Councilmember Shalong.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gastinow.
Here.
And Mayor Holly.
Here. Thank you very much. Now we'll turn to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Rich Ania, please.
My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's a signal of some kind. Under acknowledgements, we do have an item, but I think we're waiting for one individual to come here for that item. So moving on to the consent calendar. On our consent calendar this evening, we had the approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 6, 2014, receipt and file warrant claims list for the period of January 7, 2014 through January 21, 2014, receiving and filing bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending January 11, 2014, paid on January 17, 2014, and to consider an appointment to the Crescent City Planning Commission. So that's our consent calendar for this evening. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Okay, is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Very good, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the entire consent calendar. Is there any other discussion?
I would just like to ask, we usually put everybody else on the spot, so if Mr. Reno had anything to say about becoming a planning commissioner.
Before we vote?
Hold on a minute.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing that. Okay, so we'll move on to reports and presentations. We're going to receive...
Wait, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we can do that. Let's poll the vote. Can we poll the vote, please?
Oh, yes, sir, sorry. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now, the other individual is still not here, so we'll move on to the reports and presentations. We're going to receive a report on the Camden Study from Linda Horn concerning Sutter Coast Hospital. And I would like to go ahead and introduce this matter and just in the way of maybe some more recent history. This last summer, Sutter Coast Hospital approached the City Council and requested a member of the council participate in what was known as the Camden Study. Because of the importance of the hospital to our city residents and our visitors, on July 1, 2013, the council considered this request and unanimously agreed that a member of the council should be present to hear the information being presented and to participate in the study. Councilmember Kelly Shalong was then appointed as the council's representative and Councilmember Murray was appointed as an alternate. During Councilmember Shalong's participation, she gave the council brief updates. Now that this study has been completed, it is appropriate that a more comprehensive report be provided to the council on the work of the committee and the findings of the Camden Study. Before we begin, I want to make sure that we all know how we'll be proceeding this evening. First, this matter is for information only. The City Council will not be taking any action this evening. Secondly, once the presentation has been made and the council has asked its questions, there will be a period of public comment. Public comments, comment is to be made to the council and not to the presenters. As with other matters before the council, public comment on this matter will be limited to three minutes. I want to thank Linda Horn of Sutter Coast Hospital for her willingness to be here tonight and all of you in the audience for your interest in this important matter. So let's get started. Councilmember Shalong, as the council's representative to the study, do you have anything to add? And also, would you please introduce Ms. Horn?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Holly. I was appointed by this council to join in with the community group that became the Strategic Option Study Committee to listen to the information and have a weigh-in on what we felt would be important to the community and our constituents. This council felt that it was better to be a part of the process and to be privy to the information than to not partake. So I was appointed and learned more about healthcare than I probably will ever need to know, but certainly an interesting process. We had a really great group of community members on that study. In the beginning, we were required to sign a confidentiality statement. But as the process proceeded, I think what Sutter executives and the group felt was that we were all on the same page, just trying to come up with a better solution for our community. And at the end of the process, we were told that we, first of all, the people that chose to be anonymous on the committee were, came forward and said they no longer wanted to be anonymous. So we, our decision-making process was then, you know, public as a group. And then we were told that we, you know, didn't have to hold all of that information as confidential information and that we were welcome to talk about what we learned. I mean, we couldn't pass out, you know, their private documents, but we could talk about what we learned in the process. I felt that the process was a very good process. You know, not everybody in the room always agreed with everything, but it was a process and we were, every time anybody on the committee had a question, we were provided an answer. We were slated to meet just a few times and because the committee worked so hard and really dove into the topics, we met many extra times and always in the evenings and sometimes went for hours and hours at a time. So I felt like we learned enough to make some general decisions or, we didn't really make any decisions, but we had, we learned enough to provide some really strategic and thoughtful input to the process. I thought that the process was pretty transparent. And so because I was involved in that, I thought it was important that this council then provide somewhat of a report as to what I was involved with to the community. I think that was, you know, one of the biggest issues in the past is people really didn't understand what was happening because we were not provided information. I think Sutter has rethought that process. I think that they are trying to be more open and trying to communicate better with the community. The outcomes that you'll hear tonight may not be, you know, always, not everybody is going to agree with the outcomes and we're hoping that they're going to be the best decisions for the community, but we'll learn as we go forward. The, I think the most thoughtful result of this is that we are now engaged and we have more of a voice than we ever did before. So with that, I would like to introduce, I want to thank Linda and Beth Wiles for being here this evening to tell the community the outcome of the report. So Linda Horn, the Executive Director for Sutter Coast.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing all that information. I too would like to thank all of you, thank the City Council and especially you, Kelly. It was a big commitment of time. It was many late hours. We very, very much appreciate that engagement and we appreciate the fact that you would be an important part of planning for our future. Just real quick, a little bit of an overview for those that didn't know, we started in February trying to identify appropriate third-party companies that did this type of strategic planning, sent out RFPs to 10, four accepted that. In April, three community individuals picked the Camden Group and the process started and we actively proceeded. As Kelly shared with you, we started out thinking we might have three or four meetings. We ended up with eight formal meetings and in addition to that, several one-on-ones, if anyone was on vacation or whatever, we were certainly willing to do a one-on-one and keep people caught up in the process. It's important for us to be good listeners, that's one of the things that we have heard loud and clear and we made an effort to do that and this is walking you through some of the thought process. Part of this process looked at four systems in addition to Sutter Health and part of what we saw with a specific question was governance, what was their governance structure as compared to Sutter? All four were either currently had regionalization in place or were finalizing it. All four either had regional boards or were finalizing that process and all four had advisory boards and were finishing that process and all four would consider critical access for Sutter Coast. As the boards start down its process of governance, what seemed to make sense for us right now, they felt was to keep the local board in place for the time being and spend all of our time and energy focusing on our future over the next several months. A full-service hospital was never anything at question. We always expected to be a full-service hospital. There's been concerns out in the community and I certainly want to make people not worry about that. This hospital will be full service. Certainly like other businesses, we're going to have to do some financial tightening of our belt, look at cost reductions and efficiencies in our structures. We're going to actively recruit docs. That's probably one of the single most important things we can do to secure our future long-term is to have the physician to meet the needs of the community and as we listen to the community, we are still hearing a need for further recruitment. We look at our quality all the time. It's something that we measure. We can actually benchmark ourselves, not only within Sutter, but within other hospitals in the United States and in California. We do good work, very good work and, but there's always opportunities to do even more, so we will keep our strong focus there. The board did decide to proceed with critical access along with all the other initiatives that I've talked about. No one thing would solve the problem, but we needed to be proactive and address our issues at several fronts. Certainly important with critical access is that we address the community's needs and concern, that we keep open communication with them. We will actively engage our medical staff. We have several small task force going now to address the issues that have been brought up so that we can meet everyone's need as effectively as possible. We're going to keep our Strategic Option Group going. They're going to be meeting with us on a quarterly basis. We very much value them, their interaction and the input that they give us. One of the, certainly the key findings that led up to the decision of critical access along with the other things we're going to do to improve our efficiencies is the first sort of circle on the slide, three-quarters of the way down the slide, projected for fiscal year 2018 that the hospital's operating income will be at a loss of $10.6 million. With that projection, we feel the need to do all the things that I've described. Key findings, what are some opportunities? What are the improvements that we're going to do? We've been covering these and will continue to just briefly discuss them. You know, what is our expense structure? What can we do there? Can we improve our billing practices? How do we use our beds? Which will be very important to us as we proceed with critical access. The critical access reimbursement is significant. Currently, about 50% of our patients are Medicare and under Medicare, we get paid 32 cents on the dollar of cost, not on charges of cost. So we currently provide those services, only covering 32 cents. With critical access, we'll actually be paid a dollar and one cent of cost to provide that care. So it will have a significant impact. Moving forward again, focusing on quality, physician recruitment, efficiencies, the fourth bullet down on critical access, there are 1,980 rural hospitals in the United States, 1,332 have the critical access designation. Actually, 67% of all rural hospitals in the United States have chose this designation for, I'm sure, the very similar reasons that we have as well. And obviously, it's important for us to continue to actively communicate with the community. So what does it mean to our community? First and foremost is that we'll have a full-service hospital. Really, really important that we will have a full-service hospital. That's what this community needs deserved and that's what our commitment is to them. For the past five years, our average daily census have been under 25 on average and on in 2013, the average daily census was 20. So in essence, we're rightsizing the hospital to the capacity and the census that we have on an ongoing basis. We're still going to have emergency physicians in our ER 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We're still going to have hospitalist physicians in our hospital 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our continued commitment to be a full-service hospital. Taking a look at a sample of our census I brought for you November, if you look at the variance line, looking at November, whenever you see a variance in red, then we were actually below, so for the first three days of the month, we were below those red numbers compared to 2012. When you see black, we were actually above, we were doing better for the month. Then you skip down to the next variance, we had two days that we were above and the remainder eight days that we were below the census of the prior year. And if you look to the last 10, you'll see all 10 days we were below the census. And if you quickly look, you will see that there are days when our census was below the prior year by 10, 12, 8, et cetera. So if you go over into the narrative on the left-hand side, then for November, we had 96 less patient days as compared to a year ago. October, 76 less patient days for the month compared to a year ago. September, 94 days less patients for the month compared to 2012. December was a one month that we actually, our census was above it and our census was above by two days, two patient days for the month of December. If you look at our current transfers, we currently transfer out 660 patients. That's what we did in 2013 and we have a history of those types of transfers and those transfers have been occurring in the community for a very long time. We pride ourselves in those transfers being done safely. That's certainly absolutely imperative. Critical access is going to increase that number. Right now, our very good estimates is somewhere in the ballpark of 40 additional patients roughly for 2013 had we had a designation of critical access. Certainly, we want to do everything we can to mitigate those and anything and everything we can to mitigate the existing 660. But part of my point is here, whether it's safety or cost or any of the concerns associated with the transfer, it would be nice if we had none, but many times, it's absolutely necessary and critical. Those costs and risks are the same whether we have the designation or don't have the designation. And most important to us is everything we can do to mitigate that and reduce that. Right now, our reasons for transferring out currently and in order of volumes that go out, orthopedics is our highest number of transfers out, then trauma, then cardiac and neuro. I'll be working very closely with the medical staff and the groups of employees within the hospital to do everything to reduce and keep that, keep the transfers out as, keep them as low as possible. Some of the sort of misunderstandings at least that I think I've heard and something that I want to keep sharing with people is the phenomenal programs that we have in place currently in our counties as it results to transportation. CalOrg Life Flight and DelNord Ambulance have incredible programs. CalOrg's program for Crescent City is $30 per family per year and DelNord Ambulance is $20 per family per year. And if you added the two together and divided by 12 for $4 a month, then people have the opportunity to have this membership in place and what that membership does is pretty phenomenal. Each of the programs are slightly different, so I'd encourage people to go online and study them. But briefly, I'll just pick CalOrg because it was the first one on my list. If you have insurance, so if you have Medi-Cal, Medicare or private insurance and you're a member, then this covers any responsibility you would have had. So there is not an additional cost for Medicare, Medi-Cal or insured patients. And at this point, they tell me they have, if an intigent patient was a member, then they're going to be covered as well. So it's just really important that we get this information out to the public. $4 per family per month is one of the finest certain, certainly programs that are out there and if we can encourage people to participate in that, that would certainly reduce some of the concerns that we've heard expressed. You know, again, we hear concerns about our emergency room. We see 20,000 visits a year in our emergency room. Again, we will keep docs in the hospital 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, providing full services. We know that the status quo wasn't an option for us. I think as Councilmember Shalong shared with you, we looked at options long and hard and looked at every scenario we can and the status quo wasn't an option and it was going to take many, many things to get us on the road to our own, if you will, financial health. We had been losing money for four years. One of the reasons are a decline in volume, like any other business, volume can cover a lot of your fixed overheads, decline in reimbursement. More importantly, very unique now going forward is the Affordable Care Act. This is a multimillion-dollar reduction for hospitals across the United States. It will have a huge impact, not only in Crescent City, but in every single community and the high cost of doing business. So it was important to try to do a comparison for you, to compare what Sutter Coast looks like today, because I keep referencing full service, what is Sutter Coast going to look like when it's a critical access? So surgery, inpatient and outpatient, absolutely no difference. OB services, we continue to provide those services the same. Our emergency room's going to look like the same, a doctor around the clock, 365 days a year. Our hospitalists in both scenarios are going to look the same. Our lab services are going to be the same. Radiology services, the same. Respiratory therapy will continue to look the same. Our rehab will be the same. We're going to have case management 24/7, that's going to look the same. Pharmacy's going to look the same. There will be a difference in the bottom line slightly. Today, we have a larger bed capacity, but our average daily census is 20. Under critical access, we're going to have to manage our average daily census at 25. We take that responsibility very, very seriously and we're prepared to do the things we need to do to keep those numbers of transfers out as low as possible. Certainly, you know, I'm going to take questions from the council members now, but in addition, please don't hesitate to use our website or let us know if there's other questions that we could answer after today. We're more than willing to do that.
Thank you very much for your thorough report and I know you didn't have a lot of time for the kind of work you put in.
I went kind of fast because of...
So I saw you prioritizing, I appreciate that very much. I would open this up to the council.
I wanted to just briefly follow up because Linda reminded me of a few things that I thought was important that I said tonight. One thing that our group learned is that, you know, Sutter Coast Hospital has been losing money and the group really looked at the finances and the structure and the number of employees and Linda has worked with her team. And so one of the priorities that came out of our discussions was really looking hard at operation costs for the hospital. And I know that just since we started meeting that she made some significant cuts in cost of operations. So I think that was one thing that came out of our meetings. The other is that our group actually looked at four different operators, you know, whether it be Assante or St. Joseph or Avante.
Adventist.
Adventist, thank you. And we actually looked at all of those hospitals and the pros and cons of doing business with them. I actually got in my car and drove to Medford and met with the CEO of Assante. So I did my homework and felt comfortable with the discussions that we had regarding that. As far as regionalization went, as I reported to this group before, the number one concern that I had was loss of jobs. So the, I think the positive outcome, not only the loss of jobs, but also losing our local Board of Directors, those were two important issues to me. So the positive outcome from our committee meetings was that we made it very loud and clear to our local board that we wanted to keep that local board and that was one of the outcomes, is our local Board of Directors will stay in place for the time being. Can't predict the future. And then also, another result was they will be more aggressive with recruiting doctors, which is a huge concern for our community. One of the things with Assante that was kind of a deterrent is that they've never had a foundation in California and that's a huge expense. So that was one of the, one of the things that I felt was a concern. And then critical access, I learned a lot about critical access. I was, I was on the non-critical access bandwagon prior to this Strategic Options meeting. I still don't know if it's the right thing for our community, but I do know that from what I learned with our census for the hospital being down significantly over the last couple of years to the 20 to 25 patient range, there is also some things about critical access that I learned that I think will be of benefit and that is, there's, and I know Linda's still learning and they're still trying to understand all of the implications, but some of the, some of the beds in the hospital can be added on to that count of 25. And so I think that, I think what I would like to have Linda do is after the critical access study is done and that we really understand what it's going to mean for our hospital, that she come back to us. And I, I think that we being a continual partner during that discussion is important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Other questions or comments from the council? Go ahead, Kathy.
Thanks. So you used the word mitigation and it means different things in different arenas. So I was just wondering what you meant by mitigating the impacts when it looks like you're, that you're not planning on changing services, you know, reducing them, it doesn't sound like. So what do you mean by mitigation?
Meaning you do the things that will help prevent the concerns, the negative impacts that the community might have. So one concern is that we've heard that some people are concerned about the cost of transportation out. Well, that's a burden that is here anyway, but educating people that there are options to work with CalOrg and DelNord Ambulance, that would be an example of mitigation. Another example of mitigation would be referencing something similar to what Kelly Shalong just shared, observation beds. We have an opportunity to have observation beds. They are not counted in our 25 and there are times when it is appropriate for a patient to be in an observation bed rather than being admitted. When that is appropriate, then that's a way that we could mitigate and live within that limit of 25. So there are multiple examples and we would just take all the various scenarios that we could come up with. You know, when we are full, what does it look like? What could we do differently? We can plan ahead. There are some things that we do electively. If we, once we have that designation of critical access, we'll be looking ahead. You know, what are we planning further down in the week as far as elective surgeries, et cetera? If this is the flu season, the hospital's really, really full, then maybe there's an opportunity that we could look to that as that being something that we could do to not exceed that number of 25. So that's the mitigation.
Well, just in that regard, my concern about transporting people out is that a lot of times, they aren't going to have a way to get back and their families won't have the money to follow them and be there and having your family members support as part of the healing process. So I'm hoping you got that included in your mitigation provision.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
And then I was wondering, I looked, I was trying to do some homework before our meeting tonight and looking up nonprofit hospitals in California and I found a website about SMART rating. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
Okay. There's several Sutter hospitals that are on there and there's like Lakeside and then there's small hospitals... and then there's small hospitals in Willets, for example, but I couldn't find our DelNort Coast, Sutter Coast Hospital, so I'm just wondering why.
I don't know. I can do some research and get back to you. I'm more than glad to.
Okay, great. Because I'd like to know where we, how we rank in that.
What was it called?
It's called Smart Rating for Nonprofit Hospitals. And then, one more thing. I'm not sure if I heard you right. You said that the Affordable Healthcare Act is going to hurt hospitals?
Yes, the reduction is significant. For Sutter Coast, over the next 10 years, could be as much as $20 million reduction in reimbursement.
In reimbursement?
Correct.
But not, maybe, maybe more people, people get healthcare, so they won't be needing to go to the hospital?
For the services that we provide, that's the reduction we're going to get for the services we provide. The goal behind the Affordable Care Act is, yes, people get care on the front end, and then they stay healthy. That will remain to be seen, but when people do receive care, the reimbursement that we receive for that will be less, so we're going to have to be very efficient to offset that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gasno, Mr. Neen? I just had, had one question for you. In the event of an emergency, a tsunami, a flood, a pandemic, is there a way to kind of take a hiatus from, from critical access so that we can utilize that hospital in a different way, and Sutter would not lose their designation?
Absolutely, thank you. I'm so glad you asked that, because I should have brought that up. Yes, there is a process that we can go through, and yes, the 25-bed limit is lifted in a disaster so that you can obviously take care of the community needs.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, anything else from the council? Okay. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay. Okay, so we're going to open the matter up for public comment. Remember, public comment here at our city council is limited to three minutes per person. If you want to have a public comment, please come to the podium, and I'll recognize you to come up, and go ahead and give us your name and whether you're a city or county resident. So the, we're open for public comment on the Camden Study. Yes, yes, young man. This is public comment?
Public comment on the Camden Study.
Public comment on the Camden Study. Public comment on the others coming very quickly. Okay, anyone want to speak to the Camden Study? Okay, yes.
Eileen Cooper. I was wondering, there were alternatives looked at, but I wonder if, that we, whether we looked in the right places for the alternative associations that we might have made. You talk about associations in Oregon, which turned out to be difficult to jump through hoops, but are there not some, like looking at the smaller hospitals? What have they done differently than we're doing right now? I would like that to be explored carefully, and especially with smaller hospitals that are in the area. I just can't think of why, we're going to be incurring costs because of the structure of things happening with medical insurance, but you just can't get away from that this is a giant corporation that we're associating ourselves with, and they draw tremendous salaries, I mean, multi-billion dollar salaries, and I just can't think of why a smaller arrangement wouldn't be more beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to have public comment? Yes.
Connie Morrison, I'm from the county.
Thank you.
One concern I had was on the graft of the daily patient census. It showed how this year, we were always, had less patients than the year she was comparing it to, or the months of what year. And I was wondering, could we do that on an annual basis? And I know one year I was, woke up in reding at Mercy Hospital, wonderful hospital, after having, running into the mountain, my car hit some oil and it started spinning. And how many patients during that time were at other hospitals and were not counted as a census here? They were, you know, it was negative when they compared it to the year before, were there, because there wasn't, it didn't show one person during that time that was at another hospital somewhere. And so I was wondering, had people already been transferred out because of the full care hospital? And if this is a full care hospital, I'm wondering, where are the psych patients at this full care hospital? I go to the supervisor meetings, and there are hundreds of thousands of dollars spent annually transferring patients, psych patients, to psych facilities around here. And now they're trying to do telecommunications. I worked at a psych hospital, and one thing schizophrenic people have a real problem with is television. Things talk to them, and you can imagine how scary that must be, having things talk to you. And a lot of times, the television talks to them, whether it's on or off. And to have a telecommunication psychiatrist does not seem advantageous to me. Also, if we want to have more doctors here, then that's going to be more patients, and we'll have less patient beds. I would love to see where patients don't have to go off somewhere. And I think it was Ms. Murray was talking about, how do you get back? That was my big problem. How do I get back? I had broken ribs, broken elbow, broken nose, I had a lot of breaks, and trying to get back here was, you know, if it wasn't for the good friends I had, it would have been impossible. It's something to really consider. And I, and plus, they're the ones who presented the data, and if we could have looked at it before to be able to really think about our own personal needs and things that have happened, to ask the questions, that would have been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on this matter? Yes, sir.
I'd like to just point out one thing, that you don't have all the information when they give you the average patient days. If there are 39 patients one day, and one patient the next day, the average is 20 patients per day. You need more information on patient load.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Your name and county or city, please.
Hi, Craig Strong, county resident. Just a comment following up on one of our letters to the editor this morning from Dr. Gregory Duncan, who we know is opposed to the critical access. But in that, and this is partly directed toward the study we just heard about, the salaries afforded to CEOs of Sutter Health are crazy high, in the seven figures, and there's a $20 million deficit projected for four years from now, well, there seems to be a fairly easy solution if the salaries were brought in line with sanity to close that deficit. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back here, and I want to thank Sutter Coast for coming to us and all your hard work, and also, Kelly, for you participating in this.
Yeah, and just to follow up, the doctors, the recruitment plan for doctors will be for specialty doctors. For instance, they recruited an orthopedic surgeon that we have here now, Dr. Hameson. And so, you know, he's not serving the patients in the hospital, he has an actual office where people can actually go see him as an orthopedic patient. And then also, I think we were going to get copies of the presentation for the community. Did you guys happen to bring any? Okay. I would be happy to have copies of the presentation at our next city council meeting, if anybody would like to take a copy of this home, so you have it. I think that's it.
I think it'll, it'll be on our website, is that correct?
It's on our website? Oh, excellent. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and actually, it's the previous item on our agenda, it's under acknowledgement. Tonight, we have the Big Rock Community Services District here to acknowledge Crescent City's assistance in the recent water system emergency that they had. So we'll go forward with that. Okay, I think we have some people leaving. We'll just wait just a second here. Okay, thank you for being here. You have the floor.
My name is Craig Bradford. We stand before you this evening as the elected board of directors and trustees of the Big Rock Community Services District in Hauchi. May I introduce Cliff Shepard, Charles Swenson, Alan Portius, and Art Aiden. They're all members of the board. We are accompanied by our terrific general manager, Mike Wiley. Has a familiar name for you, I think. For the five days surrounding Christmas, the township of Hauchi experienced its worst disaster in memory. A hidden water lake at the empty National Parks Center information location on the west side of town drained our municipal system of almost a half a million gallons of water, all treated drinking water. Nothing was left for the kitchens or bathrooms. Several outside agencies came to our rescue, of course, but the most immediate and crucial assistance provided to us issued from the city of Crescent City in the forms of Eric Weir, Jason Wiley, and Kim Smith. Without their help, we would not have been able to resolve this emergency in a manner that clearly avoided serious and long-lasting consequences to the township at large. Eric Weir and the city's public works organization are like family to us. When things get tough in the water distribution business, the tough get going as brothers and sisters who share the common interest of providing healthy drinking water to their customers. We are deeply appreciative of being included in that valuable network. Now, before we make our presentation to you, we'd like to single out Jason Wiley and Kim Smith for working directly with us on site. Jason's keen insight and experience as a water distribution operator kept us from having to excavate US Highway 199. He cleverly figured out which valves to turn near a complex and unused assortment of pipelines that enabled us to temporarily backfill our 100,000-gallon Redwood Water Storage Tank on the hillside while we continued an exhaustive search for the problematic leak. That decision put some water back into the municipal system. As time dragged on and Christmas drew closer, he finally recommended we overpressure our pipelines to force that backfilled water out of the ground so violently that it could be seen. Very unique way of doing business. Our general manager reluctantly took his advice, for we were concerned that such an approach would further damage our aging water system. After all, it is 43 years old. However, the Big Rock Community Services District water system held together, and the leak was quickly found inside the park's property. Jason truly saved the day, and I might add, Christmas for the entire community. This emergency situation could have become far worse for Hauchi and DelNort County had it not been for Jason, his partner Kim Smith, and Eric Weir at the city of Crescent City. These are extraordinary men who personify the meaning of public service and who are of great credit to their profession.
Thank you for that exciting story, and I, we too appreciate our staff and all that they did that time, and they do that often, and so I appreciate your acknowledgement.
If you come down there, I'll give you something far more exciting.
You have Jason, Eric, and is Kim here tonight?
Yep. Got two of the three. Mayor? We hope our being here tonight demonstrates how deeply appreciative we are to all of you here. On behalf of the resident families and businesses of Hauchi, we present this plaque to the city of Crescent City. May I read it? "To the Crescent City Council, the city manager, and Public Works Department with sincere appreciation for your generous assistance in Hauchi's time of need, December 22 through 24, 2013."
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate, we appreciate the honor for our staff. We are very proud of them. They work day in and day out for our city, and when we were able to help our neighbors, they were pretty proud to do so, and we were proud of the outcome, so thanks.
Well, that was pleasant.
Are they going to hang that in the corp yard, in the offices? I think they should.
It's really nice to have the recognition. Very nice.
There'll be a small modification on the plaque. The date's not quite right, so, okay, very good. So let's move on to communications under the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and the city or county residency for the future, for the record, and a public comment is, again, limited to three minutes. So is there any public comment this evening?
Mayor Hawley and council members, I'm Scott Feller, district representative to Senator Jim Nielsen, and the Crescent City Harbor Commissioner member. I'd like to ask you to save the date for March 22, as we will have the ribbon cutting for our brand-new harbor. We've invited a lot of people, the formal invitations will be going out fairly soon, but I wanted to ask you to save the date, so you'd all be there.
Do you know what time it's supposed to be?
1 o'clock. Well, at least that's what's planned right now. It's in conjunction with the tsunami week, there's going to be a lot of events that day. They'll have hour and a half-long guided tours of the eight new kiosks that'll be going up. I don't remember, what is it, 30 events being planned? There's a lot going on. There's, there's, our last planning meeting had probably 75 people there, and I suspect that will be significantly larger before it's all done and set with. So there's a lot of people involved in this. I want to make sure you guys have the date on your calendar, so we didn't lose you.
We will, I'm certainly, we'll all be there. And again, the harbor looks awesome. We said that to Mr. Young just recently, and we'd say it to you. It's looking great.
It, it, the finishing touches have been done, it's just awesome. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. The League of Cities meeting, is that right about there?
It's the day before.
The day before in Ukiah?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work that out. The League of Cities meeting.
The Redwood Empire Division.
Redwood Empire Division.
Oh, the 21st?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, because the chamber, I am chairing the economic summit this year, and the chamber has set a tentative date for the 21st to tie in with that weekend.
Okay, so we'll
Interesting.
Have more discussion about
To be, to be determined.
To be determined. Okay, again, I, was there any public comment? Yes, please come up to the podium.
Yes, Eileen Cooper. Later on, you'll be hearing on item number 11, whether or not about, or about funding a resolution to fund the beachfront park coastal access and non-motorized boating trail project. I'd like to bring to your attention that aside from funding, there are substantial problems with the project. problems with the project, the mitigated negative declaration, and the appropriateness of the project, um, altogether. Audubon Society is very concerned about the project, and, um, and the comment period for the mitigated negative declaration, um, according to the Coastal Commission and the Sequinet database, has not even been closed. It's posted as the twenty-third on Sequinet database, and the Coastal Commission for the tidal zone says a forty-five-day period should stay open, as far as they're concerned. So, the public, a, a chance to even absorb what the public has just, you know, recently submitted, and, and the period is still open, and to take those considerations into effect, is important, and, and to hear what the Audubon Society has to say about the damage that boating will do at that particular spot. So, it seems like the cart is before the horse, and there's, there is so much I could share with you that I, I did email, um, to Robin Patch today, and she said she sent on to you, um, the Friends of Dillork comments. However, Audubon Society is also weighing in, um, I don't know if you've received their comments as well. Um, another, um, bird rescuer is, is submitting comments. All of these, um, need to be analyzed. Um, the master plan did not have boating at this spot. This spot was completely, um, indicated by the environmental community as escha, very sensitive habitat, where you should not ever bring a boat in amongst those birds. People with sensitivity know that, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other, uh, public comment on, uh, on anything that's not on the agenda? Yes?
Connie Morrison from the county. Um, I, um, tried to pull up today's agenda. It wasn't in yesterday, and I finally found it today, and I wasn't able to, uh, print it out, and it, are you, do you have to log in now to be able to, uh, print out the agenda?
No, I read the agenda on Friday afternoon. It's there. Just go to the city website, there's the agenda.
That's what I did.
All hundred and seventy-three pages were there, 'cause that's where I read it.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay, great, great. And, and it was real small, and last week's agenda I could enlarge and read. This one, I just guessed. So, anyway, that's one concern. The other concern that I had was about the, um, donation of property, um, to the, about the, uh, Front Street, and I wasn't aware, I had been looking at underground stor- leaking underground storage tanks, and I guess they pulled one up, and, um, the letter I have here from the, um, California Regional Water Quality Control Board, they're talking about Front Street and, um, or that portion of the land where they took out that underground storage tank, and it says residual levels of total petroleum hydrocarbons as diesel fuel remain on site are declining in concentrations, uh, through time by in situ biodegradation, and are expected to achieve numeric water quality objectives, where you can drink it or use it, in a reasonable time period of approximately five to ten years. Okay, this is written in two thousand and ten. Um, and my big concern about that area is they're gonna donate land, I, apparently tonight, and one of them is gonna be a hundred and seventy-six acres of land in that area that's gonna be donated to the, to the Front Street project, I think. And, um, no?
Yeah, there's not that kind of-
Well, anyway, if you could check, are you gonna do any kind of studies on the water from the underground storage tank?
Well, I think if you're talking about the donations, that, those donations have already occurred and been accepted by the city council in a prior meeting, so it's kinda done.
Oh, okay, well, there's a hundred and seventy acres, parcel.
Well, maybe one point.
The AP, APN 118-020-31.
That's Beachfront Park.
118-020-31 was not donated?
Oh, the Brown property, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was thinking about the other donation.
In tonight's agenda, it's on number nine, they talk about 118-020-
Okay.
Are you guys choosing to talk about that stuff now, 'cause you're not gonna be here for that agenda item?
No, I, I just want, I, 'cause I, it said, last week's agenda read like minutes. It said that Mr. Taylor presented up, uh, point- No, it said, I, I checked that, and it said, no, it was the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
So, I don't know why I missed, but I, anyway, it, it could be environmentally checked, I wouldn't even wonder.
Thank you. And, and, and those of you who are present, it's my understanding that, that when you, you comment in pu- the regular public comment period on something that's on the agenda, you don't get two bites of the apple. You don't get to come back when number eleven arrives and have another public comment. Right, I understand. Okay, thank you. Sir, did you wanna have a regular public comment? Yes. Okay, I would suggest that if, if you wanted to have a comment on that, you should wait until that item. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, any other public comment then, on, on items not on the agenda? Okay, let's move forward then. We'll adjourn the, the regular meeting of the Crescent City, City Council, and, and we will go to the meeting of the Crescent City Housing Authority. Which is somewhere.
Number seven. Number seven.
Okay. Yeah, let me, let me look at you. I do have a bookmark. Wait, 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 wait. Okay, I actually had, not only did I have it a bookmark on my iPad, I have a, a hard copy, but I can't find either one. Okay, so, um, the first thing to do is to, uh, call, uh, the meeting of the Crescent City Housing Authority to order. Would you please, uh, call roll? Thank you, Robin.
Yes, sir. Board member Ania.
Here.
Board member Shalong.
Here.
Board member Murray.
Here.
Vice Chair Gastinow.
Here.
And Chairman Holly.
Here. Okay, thank you. The first order of business on the Crescent City Housing Authority is another, uh, time for public comment on housing authority, uh, activities. Any member of the audience is, again, invited to address the housing authority on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent, of the Crescent City Housing Authority. Comments of public interest or on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the authority is not able to undertake extended discussion or to act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name for the record. Any comments are not, that are not at the microphone will not be a part of the public record, and, again, public comment is limited to three minutes. So, any public comments on the Crescent City Housing Authority agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. We'll move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move for approval of consent calendar items one and two.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, that the consent calendar be approved in whole. Uh, any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, we should poll the vote since there's money. Okay.
Yes, sir. Board member Murray.
Yes.
Board member Shalong.
Yes.
Board member Ania.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gastinow.
Yes.
And Chairman Holly.
Yes, thank you. Housing Director's Report. I see you're here. Do you have anything to, to say? Okay, very good. Thank you for being here.
Pictures?
Okay, that'll be next time. Public hearing, we have none. Continuing business, we have none. New business, there is none. Uh, adjournment, we'll adjourn to the next regular meeting scheduled for February seventeen, two thousand and fourteen, at six o'clock PM. So, we're adjourning the, uh, Crescent City Housing Authority, and we'll, we'll move back to the regular meeting of the Crescent City City Council. We have no public hearings, and under continuing business, we're going to consider and waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Number 778, Amending Chapter 1.24 of the Crescent City Municipal Code, Establishing Procedures for Leans and Special Assessments to Satisfy Unpaid Administrative Citations. Uh, Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, this item was on, uh, the city council's, uh, last agenda, and staff's recommending to move forward and, uh, adopt second reading.
Thank you. Okay, any questions of, of Mr. Palazzo or staff? No? Okay, any public comment on this matter? Okay, we'll bring it back to the city council. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move that we adopt, uh, and waive, waive full reading and read by title only and introduce the attached ordinance 778, Amending Chapter 1.24 of the Crescent City Municipal Code, Establishing Procedures for Leans and Special Assessments to Satisfy Unpaid Administrative Citations.
And, and instead of introduce, it be adopt.
Pardon?
It be adopt.
Till we adopt, I'm sorry, adopt.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, the, uh, Ordinance Number 778 be adopted. Uh, is there any additional discussion? Okay, please poll the vote?
Yes, sir. Uh, council member Shalong?
Yes.
Council member Ania?
Yes.
Council member Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, thank you. Okay, again, under new business, we're going to accept and direct staff to complete the transfer of a land donation, APN 118-020-43 and 118-02-31, from the Brown family to the city of Crescent City. Mr. Palazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. The, the item before you is a land donation from the Brown family. Uh, staff is recommending to accept that donation and direct the city manager to, you know, complete the transfer of that property. The background on, on this item, as staff is working through the process of, um, finalizing the plans for the RV park, uh, we discovered, and, and there's a, a picture on your screen, that there is a portion of the RV park that is on a piece of the, a portion of the Brown property that's, uh, adjacent to that park. The, uh, I, I went and spoke with Eileen and Hector Brown about this, uh, situation, and, uh, requested that, uh, in order to kind of resolve the, the, um, encroachment, if they could donate a piece of their property, uh, to the city, you know, for the RV park use. The, you know, donation is about fifteen thousand square feet, and what it means with the design of the RV park, uh, if this land, you know, were not donated, it'd probably, you know, limit us to about eighty-three spaces, to where, you know, with that land donation, we have about eighty-nine spaces that we can design to, to the park. Uh, with my conversations, they were receptive to the idea, thought about it for a couple days, and came back and, uh, uh, said that they would be willing to, um, make that donation. So, I just, you know, to recognize, you know, the Browns and, uh, in working with staff, uh, you know, just, you know, sent that appreciation, you know, you know, let them know that we would be taking this to the council. They weren't able to be, uh, here this evening, uh, to speak with the council, but I did speak with, uh, Ms. Brown, Eileen Brown, this, uh, afternoon. You know, the Browns have had a long history, you know, with the city, and do quite a bit of development along the, the south, uh, Highway 101 corridor. Uh, in the recent years, they constructed the Ocean View Motel, and with that, they took down the old ice plant, uh, facility, and that, you know, really improved, uh, the character and, uh, aesthetics of, of the area. They also own the Lighthouse and the Bayview, uh, Motel. Uh, they've, uh, been involved and worked on, you know, you know, construction of the salon, Ocean World, Apple Peddler, um, they have some apartments in town, um, so, you know, they've done quite a bit, you know, for the city, and this, uh, land donation is certainly, you know, very appreciative, so we can move forward with our RV park plans, uh, with, uh, that construction project and approve that area. So, I'd recommend accepting the donation.
I have a question. With our master plan, did we have this, um, encroachment already in mind, or how did that, or will we have to revise our master plan?
Well, you know, in the, the design, and when we started going out and surveying, you know, the property and putting it on paper, we recognized that, you know, that encroachment existed, and so this is to correct, to correct that.
So, we were already encroaching?
We're already encroaching.
Right, right.
You can see, you know, by the, the, the property, uh, some of those, uh, RVs that are on that site, you know, work, you know, kind of well within, you know, some of, uh, the Brown property.
And, and will this help us with, um, our coastal trail project that we've been stalled with?
No.
No.
No, this is just, you know, strictly for the RV park, and, you know, finalizing the, the, kind of the boundaries of, you know, the, the land that we have to, to, to work with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Palazzo?
I would just like to say that, um, I think it'd be nice for us to do a nice thank you for them, as well as the, the last family that donated some property.
We can do that, and in what form, or just a-
A letter?
Certainly a letter.
I think a nice, a nice certificate of appreciation or a plaque, or something a little more formal. I mean, it's, it's pretty significant.
It is. It's a very generous donation.
Good idea, we will do that.
And it, you have to wait for public comment, Connie. And then I was gonna say fifteen thousand square feet. If we weren't already encroaching, would allow some nice area for tenting.
We will be bringing the plan back to the council. We will show that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so if there are no other questions for Mr. Palazzo, we'll move this to public comment. Any public comment on the land donation?
For confirmation, um, for people who are, um, worried about this, are we just talking about that little sliver and, and is, and that is definitely outside the area of contamination that is associated with the parcel? Is that correct?
Eric, would you answer that?
I'll clarify that, actually. And I think that there's some confusion, the Soss property land donation, uh, if you recall, we did a phase-one environmental assessment on that site. It's basically where you go and you assess, they, they look at the geotracker, all the wat- regional bar quality, uh, work that's been done on the site cleanup, but this is, that's a totally separate piece of property. That property is actually over on, off Front Street.
Eric, you go ahead and just address the council.
Right, so there's, there's no contamination issues associated with this property that we're looking at here.
Okay, thank you.
So, to clarify, the Soss property has nothing to do with this area.
Do you wanna provide clarification again?
No, she did.
The, this sliver of land is at our RV park. The Soss property that we're, that, the, the public is referring to is a piece of property that was donated to us, uh, a couple months ago, that is located over in the Beachfront Park area. Has nothing to do with this site.
Okay, those are two different, uh, two different areas. Okay, so, we're gonna, no other public comment, we're gonna bring this back to the... Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move forward then. We're gonna move this back to the, to the council for action?
I'll move that we accept and direct staff to complete the line, the transfer of the land donation, which is a portion of APN number 118-020-43 for the Brown family to the city of Crescent City.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to transfer the land donation from the Browns. Uh, any other discussion amongst the council? Okay, seeing none, uh, I, just to be safe, let's poll the vote again, please.
Council member Ania?
Yes.
Council member Murray?
Yes.
Council member Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes, and again, my thanks to the Browns for their generous donation. Okay, number ten, receive and file the city of Crescent City annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand and thirteen.
Mayor Holly, I'd like to introduce Emily Boyer, our finance director, to, uh, present this item.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would just like to say that if this were a perfect world, you would have received these audited financials before December thirty-first. Unfortunately, this last year had a few transitions in the finance department for the city of Crescent City. I'd like to assure you that delaying or not having this report ready for you until January does not, um, violate any of our deadlines for our state and federal filings are generally March thirty-first, so we are not going to be late with any of those reports. Um, the, I'd like to just comment briefly, the housing authority is reported in this, the- The, I'd like to just comment briefly, the housing authority is reported in this, these financials as a major fund of the city. Customarily, the housing authority has a standalone financial report as well. We will be presenting that to you at a later date. The financial numbers for the housing authority are, however, included here, so if you want that information, it is available. All that said, I'm going to turn the presentation over to the city's independent auditor. Mr. Don Reynolds has been the city CPA for the last seven years. I'd like to turn it over to Don at this time.
Okay, I think there may be some, some questions before Mr. Reynolds gets to the podium?
All right.
Thank you, Emily.
Sure. I, two questions. I'm a little concerned about us moving into February without filing our statements, so I'd like to know what the projected time is that we will file them, and then you said that you'll report back with the housing authority, and I'd like to know the projected time for that as well.
Okay. Once the, you have received and, and accepted the city's audited financial reports, we will file with both the state comptroller's office and the federal government. It's online filing, which Mr. Reynolds will file, and then I have to go on and also verify it, and that will be done within the next few days. As far as the housing authority, I anticipate bringing that back to you either the last meeting in February or the first meeting in March. We are required to file that one with the federal government by March 31st, and we don't anticipate any problems making that deadline.
So filing it that late will have no impact on our programs?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Emily while she's up there? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Reynolds?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm again before you. As Emily pointed out, I've been the city's auditor now since, well, beginning with fiscal year 2007 and proceeding forward from there. I appreciate your confidence in me, and we've, we've had a good tenure. As Emily stated, this year was a little bit different, only because we lost your, your previous finance director late in the game. We had an interim finance director for a short period, and then Emily came on board, so it did somewhat delay the completion of the project. That combined with the fact that the promulgating boards, specifically the Government Accounting Standards Board, took it upon themselves this year to pass several new pronouncements, which did make some changes to the body of the statements and caused somewhat of a delay on our part, just making sure that everything was in compliance. And that's, that's always an issue when, when we have one or two. This year, we had four new pronouncements that had to be evaluated to make sure that the city's financial statements were in compliance with professional standards. So, that being said, as I've pointed out in years past, and I will point out again, the financial statements before you are your statements, not mine. There's a common misconception somehow with a lot of organizations that somehow these are the auditor's financial statements, and that's the farthest thing from the truth. These are your financial statements. The information in here is prepared by your staff, and what we do is we assist you in putting it in the form of a formal financial statement, and then we issue an opinion on it. The only thing I own in this statement are the three opinions with my signature on them. Everything else belongs to you, and this is all a result of Emily's hard work. I have to really commend her for the yeoman's job that she did coming in late in the game. There was virtually no transition, in fact, I believe she's had very little contact with the prior finance director. So there was no transition period, no, no ability on her part to be brought up to speed by prior staff. You know, she worked with a transitioning finance director, so that's, that's a very awkward position for a finance director to come in, especially right in the middle of an audit. So my hat's off to her for, for, you know, pushing through this process and getting it done, quite frankly, as quickly as it was. I wouldn't have been at all surprised to see this pushed back into March in other circumstances. So, I can, I'd like to refer you initially to page one, which is the independent auditor's report. You'll notice this year, it's quite a bit longer than it's been in the past. It spans from page one to page three. Again, this is new promulgation. If you look at the report, you'll notice that two paragraphs on the first page, one spells out my responsibility as the auditor, one spells out your responsibility as management. And again, this is, this is an action on the part of my profession to try to make sure that our clients understand that this is their document and they're responsible for it and for the information that's in it. So I urge you to read it, understand it, try to digest it, and go forward. You, you have the, the advantage of having this information having been provided to you on an ongoing basis by staff throughout the year, so most of this information is not alien to you. However, you haven't necessarily seen it in this format. I'm happy to report that we were able to issue an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which means that we believe that these financial statements do in fact fairly present your financial position at June 30, 2013, and the results of operations for the year then ended. Overall, our audit was, was made for the purpose of issuing an opinion. In addition, in the special reports section, you'll find two other reports on compliance with laws and regulations and internal control. One of those specifically is addressing the federal programs, one addressing the general controls of the city in accordance with government accounting standards. Again, I'm happy to report that we have no findings to report to the board. In the course of performing an audit, we always find little things that are insignificant in nature, and those may be addressed to staff directly in the course of the process. What we bring to you are the things that potentially might jeopardize the city's finances or your fund, federal funding or state funding. And again, I'm happy to report, we have no findings of that kind. One of the other things that was given to you this evening, and we'll get to that in just a minute, is what used to be referred to as the management letter, it's now actually called the communication with those charged with governance, and I'm going to go through that with you in just a minute, but there are a couple of things in the financial statements that I'd like to kind of point out that I think are indicative of Mr. Palazzo's effort during the year, his staff. I'm happy to report that the general fund ended the year with not a huge surplus, but actually, they ended the year in the black, which is nice to see in this economy. It's a rare occurrence. The enterprise funds, I know have been, with the, with the rate setting and so on and so forth that's gone on this year, I know that, that there's been a lot of discussion about the enterprise funds, and if you look back on page 20, you'll find them broken down individually, sewer water and the RV park. And if you look at the net operating income or loss, you'll see that the sewer fund actually generated a small profit. Small deficit, the RV park, again, ran at a profit, but if you drop down a little bit further and take a look at the debt service, you'll see that that submit, excuse me, significantly impacted the sewer fund. You know, these are the things that when you're looking at rate setting, you really have to take under consideration, because the financing that you undertook, for instance, on the sewer expansion, was predicated on the revenues from that fund being able to cover the debt service. All of the revenue is obligated to cover that, and if you can't cover it, it's got to come out of your general treasury. That's something that over, in a lengthy period of time, the city cannot afford. You don't have that kind of reserves. So therefore, the rates have to be adjusted to reflect the actual cost of operations. I know it's not something that's politically comfortable for most people, but the bottom line is, it's got to be done. The system has to pay for itself. Enterprise funds by definition are supposed, but, excuse me, are supposed to be self-sustaining. They're supposed to operate like a business enterprise, and they're supposed to pay for themselves. They're not supposed to be subsidized by the rest of the city. And so this fiscal impact has to be addressed, and I know that you're in the process, and I know that, you know, you've just gone through a series of rate hearings. I apologize, because I don't know the outcome of those, but I know it's an ongoing process, and it will continue to be. So, as I say, that being said, there were, in the general fund, there were several transfers made this year. The bulk of the transfers out were to the capital improvement funds in order to fund those for future capital investment. If you look at the operating statement, you'll see there are also about 167, or, excuse me, $169,000 where the transfer is in, which is primarily gas tax revenue and proceeds from the gas tax funds, because the capital projects associated with those funds are accounted for in the general fund. So those monies are, are recorded in the individual special revenue funds, but then they're transferred into the general fund to cover the general streets operations. And all of those transfers are detailed in the footnotes. The other document that I referred to, which is the communication with those charged with governance, in this document, basically, we're supposed to point out any problems that we had during the course of the audit, and we're also supposed to try to point out any areas where the city has had to make substantial estimates. There are several things that are significant there. One of the biggest things that, that is being addressed right now, for instance, again, back to the sewer fund, is depreciation. During the course of this audit, they, they looked real heavily at the way that the new plant was being depreciated, to make sure that those short-lived assets were being depreciated at appropriate lives, rather than being lumped into a 50-year asset when we know at the end of five years, it's going to be in need of replacement or, or major repair. And I know that, that the interim finance director looked at that, and I think Emily, you looked at that as well, and did that project get pulled through to fruition, or is it still ongoing? I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot.
We did make some adjustments to how we're depreciating the sewer assets between the short term and the long term.
Yeah, what they did was, was they looked at a number of other facilities and looked at the relative percentages of short-term versus long-term assets, and tried to come up with reasonable allocations, rather than what was previously on the books was just extended life, which wasn't realistic. Again, that goes back to rate setting. That depreciation expense is going to increase the loss, because you have, again, have to be able to fund that capital outlay a few years down the road, instead of 50 years down the road. We had no problems with staff, no problems with management in, in the conduct of the audit. As I say, considering everything that we were up against with the transitioning, I can't say enough about your staff in getting through the process in what I consider to be a pretty, pretty smooth fashion, considering what they were up against. So, at that point, I'd like to respond to any questions you might have. And I know that, again, receiving this a week even before the meeting is not enough time to digest it, so as always, I'm always available for phone calls. You can reach me at my office if you need me to come back to the board. Be more than happy to do so at a later date to address any other issues. One thing I would like to, to quickly follow up on with Emily is the housing authority. The only thing that's lacking right now is the statutory report that's required by HUD, and that report is, has been filed in draft in conformance with HUD requirements. They have two filing deadlines. One is 60 days beyond the end of the fiscal year for an unaudited report, and then March 31st for the audited report. So you are, you have complied with the first filing deadline, now we're just in the process of meeting the second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council?
I'll just make a quick comment. I just wanted to thank you. Dawn and I go back, when we were having severe financial distress in this city, we started an audit committee that I chaired, and that's when we hired Dawn to audit, start auditing our financial statements. At that time, this management letter would have been about 15 pages long, there were 21 significant issues.
Right.
And so we've come a long way, and I know that your assistance has been appreciated, so I always like to, to thank you for your continued patience and endurance during the length of stay that you've had with us.
I appreciate it very much, and appreciate your faith. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I got on the council in 2008, so I was at the beginning of kind of when you started, and I've seen some significant improvements in, in the city's management, but I also like how you've laid things out in this, this current audit. For example, having the estimated lives, I don't remember having that for the depreciation before, broken down into?
We've, it was there, we've added more detail.
More detail into it.
We've tried to expand the disclosure and make it more readable.
Yeah, so it's really helpful, and it's gotten more user-friendly.
Yeah, we collectively did a lot of work redrafting this statement to try to make it more informational. I know Emily put a huge amount of work into the management discussion analysis, to try to give you as much usable information as possible, and that'll be an ongoing process. If we continue our relationship with the city, we'll certainly strive to make it better every year and give you more, more usable information in a more usable format.
And just as a side, thank you for assisting us with the, our RDA dissolution.
You're welcome.
Or not.
Well.
And I, I'm especially thankful of you bringing up the depreciation issues. I've been, that's one of the, the things that I have kind of brought to the forefront in the last six months, is our policies for depreciation, which don't really exist. So I, I know our finance department is working on that with our city manager, and I think that's a great, a great tool for us to have moving forward.
Okay, as I understand it, we just receive and file the annual report, so there's no action necessary by the council. Is that correct, Mr. Palazzo? No actions necessary by us at this time?
Just direct staff to receive and file.
Okay, very good. So directed? All right. So, going on to number 11, consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution Number 2014-02. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City approving the application for land and sewer conservation fund and beachfront park coastal access and non-motorized boating trail project. That's, Mr. Palazzo, would you please?
Mayor, I'd like to have Mr. Taylor, Community Development Director, present this item.
Thank you. So we're asking for tonight, the resolution is to approve the filing for grant application to the land and water conservation fund for this coastal access project. And just, I want to make it clear, that's what we're talking about tonight. We're only talking about approval to move forward with an application for funding. We're not approving the project itself. The project's still going through that vetting phase, we're still going through the environmental review process. The public comment period ended today, and for the state agencies, it'll end in two more days, and this project will be going to the planning commission on a January the 30th. So I encourage anybody to show up to that meeting that'd like to have some input on that process. So just a little background, everybody familiar with the beachfront park master plan project? This was brought to the council back in December, or the final closeout for the beachfront park master plan for the CDBG grant funding. And at the time, we indicated that, you know, we had the master plan, we also had some extra funding to do some additional work to the master plan. And I just wanted to, for, a master plan isn't a set plan for construction. Obviously, a master plan is to help us plan out park uses, you know, what's the best use, where's the best place to put those uses in a park, but it's, you know, it's changeable, you know, obviously depending on funding, and things change over time, you know, and things change over time, you know? A master plan's probably a 10, 20-year document to help with that and to guide that along. So during the process, you know, obviously the Howe Park East portion is what you're looking at here. Having extra access, picnic facilities, the fire pits that we have down here, additional parking, it was important to the public and the public input, and having coastal access, safe coastal access was very important. That was brought up over and over again. So what we did with the RM Design Group came back and they helped us design an access point here to service the Howe Park East project area. And this is what we're talking about. So what we're looking at here is this access point here. We'd be adding this parking area, paved parking lot. We'd have a staircase going down. But then, more importantly though, we're having an ADA access ramp, and that's essentially what this is.
Eric, did you say a paid or paved?
Paved.
Okay. It's like, oh, new revenue source.
Well, we, we...
Mr. Plotzel?
Find a way to put, they have the parking meters, I guess we'd get them out there. And again, like I said, it's essentially, its first and foremost function is to serve as a pedestrian access point and for ADA access. That's, and you're looking at the, we look at the other feasible alternatives, and because to enable to get the less than 5% slope to meet the ADA and not to have to have the ADA hand railings out there, obviously we want this to be aesthetically pleasing as well. It's right on the coastline. We'd like to have it incorporated into the revetment as much as possible. As you can see, the majority of it is within the existing rock revetment. And that's why we have the length here to the ramp, and that's why it extends as far as it does and kind of cuts back. So it gets us that less than 5% slope, and it eliminates the need to have to have those railings. And the other part of this, we looked at, and we want to, I'll back up a little bit. So in order to get the project, obviously we need funding. We went to Coastal Conservancy. We asked them if they're interested in this project. They finally came forward and said, yes, they are interested in the project. At the tune of about $200,000 a project, its estimated cost is about $400,000 for construction. The grant opportunity that we're looking at requires a 50% match, so we had to find, it just shows it's getting harder and harder to find grant funding and to do these projects. So now, it used to be in the past, we could probably just go to the Conservancy and ask for full funding and they'd say yes. Now it's, well, we can fund half a project, and now we're looking at state parks to fund the other half of the project. And that's kind of where we're at with this, and why we are where we are now. We received the letter, and I'll just move forward with this a little bit. So this is the project area we're looking at, and this is where the environmental review covered this portion of the project area. And we did the, I did the environmental review for all of the park amenities. Right now, we're just looking at funding to construct the parking lot and the access point. Hopefully, we'll have some additional funding, or maybe if this project comes under budget a little bit, maybe we can, you know, maybe work some city crews, maybe, you know, create some more of these pathways and the bump outs. Again, here's an aerial photograph. If you're not familiar already with the area, here's the Beachfront Park. This would be, you know, Stamps Way coming in and Howe Drive. And that's what we put it, it makes more sense to have it over here on this side. It's the unpaved parking area now. It's already informally used. People come here, they park here, they go over this revetment, which is pretty unsafe. But people are constantly going out there, they use it now. You can see the warm pathways. You just go out there and sit out there, you'll see how much use there is at that property. Again, here's a site photograph. And so we'd be looking at, you know, a portion of this would be turned into the paved parking to make it a little more user-friendly for folks. And then we'd have access, the access point off the parking lot here. And eventually, this would be developed. You could have your pathways and your, your kickouts, your picnic areas, your, your fire pits, much like the Howe Park West. It's very, been very successful down that part of the park, and we'd like to recreate that down here. Again, here's a picture from the beach looking up, and you can see the warm pathways. Here's one here, and here's one here. And obviously, it's not safe. It's not safe for children, it's not safe for anybody, and especially elderly, or, again, that's why we have the ADA access point. It's really inaccessible for those folks. And if you talk about the next nearest location is a quarter mile to the west down the Howe Park. So it doesn't sound like a far distance, but go stand out there and look the other direction. If you have young children or you're incapable of going, that's a long distance to travel. Again, so I'll just go back to this a little bit. Coastal Conservancy had sent us this letter dated December 12, 2013, so we didn't know until December 12th if we'd even be moving forward or even be able to move forward with the project. So now that's where we're coming. We started the environmental review process. The 21st, it went out. There's a 30-day, actually, it's only a 20-day public review period. We extended it to 30 days. And then, of course, we send that also off to the State Clearing House for public agency review as well. So that will have concluded when we get to our meeting on the 30th for the Planning And of course, the grant opportunity we're asking for here is the Land and Water Conservation Fund through state parks. We have the commitment for the matching funds. What we're asking tonight is just to sign a resolution that'll allow us to move forward with an application for funding for the rest of the project. Obviously, it's a competitive grant, and there's no guarantee that we'll even get this funding. So I just want to make it clear, that's what we're asking for tonight, is for a resolution and authority to move forward with the grant application.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Any questions of Eric? Questions or comments? Okay, we'll open up for comment. Connie, could you, again, reintroduce yourself and if you're a city or county resident?
Today's the last day for public comment on the park, and in two days, is the state's last day for comment? Yeah, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, if you haven't already commented on this item? And Eileen, you virtually took your entire time before commenting on this item. Thank you. It's all on the same subject, though. You've had your three minutes. Thank you for your concern.
I have some comments.
Yes.
I'd like to start.
Okay, well, let me, can I, can I just see if there's any other public comment?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to comment on this? Yes, sir?
Please, Owen.
Okay, thanks.
And I would just, again, reiterate that the public meeting will be on the 30th at Planning Commission, so there will be opportunity for folks to speak then, and all the public input will be presented at that meeting.
Eric, is that at 5:30?
5:30, correct.
Okay, here, right? Is it here? Okay, great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, for the clarification.
Sir, I'm sorry, we have to go through these formalities. Your name and...
Name, Craig Strong, county resident.
Thank you.
And, yeah, my comments are really directed towards the project itself, but I think they do still apply to your, your application for funding from state waterways and land and waterways. And the lead question is, that may not be the appropriate place to be seeking funding because the Elk Creek area is, is a ecologically sensitive habitat, a sensitive habitat area, and that in itself renders it inappropriate for, for boating access. So while the project itself may have merit, the location has problems right there at the east end of Howe Drive. And I have a letter composed here, which I'd like to provide to you on paper as part of the record, but let me try and highlight it, as to my concerns for having a boating access and more pedestrian use at there. First, the Elk Creek area is an important bird habitat. The estuary is regularly used by hundreds of migrating shorebirds and seabirds and foraging in the estuary. While the entire harbor attracts many birds, the Elk Creek, Elk Creek mouth is a focal point, which always has the highest and most consistent concentration of birds in the harbor. The site has been somewhat degraded now, since there are no barriers or signage to prevent disturbance or roosting of foraging birds, but it is minimal at present. Our proposed access would put more people directly into this important bird area with clear and predictable, predictable negative impacts on wildlife species. In addition to the birds, there are the bird watchers. The Elk Creek area is incredibly popular among bird watchers, and bird watching is a very important part of our ecotourist economy. I have a lot of friends that come up from Humboldt County, and they always make a point of stopping at Elk Creek to see what birds are there and if there are any new rare species, just because it is consistently such a premier birding spot. I can leave that for later on. But a very prominent concern to, to proposing work for beach access and if boating were to be proposed, boating access at the site, is that the Elk Creek estuary is unstable geologically. Sands in and around the estuary tend to be saturated and shift during flood, floods and with storm events. Currently, right now, you can go down there even at low tide, and there's no beach at the east end of Beachfront Park. It's all water. Elk Creek is draining right in front of the revetment, and even the sands to hundreds of feet to the west of it are saturated with water.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. Your three minutes are up, I'm afraid.
Okay. So I hope this brings up some points that, that boating access is not appropriate at the site, and there may be alternative sites, but we'll take this...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any other public comment? Okay, I know that we have some comments amongst the council. Mr. Ania?
Yeah, let me start. I think, I think some people have misinterpreted the word boating. There's not going to be a boat launch there where a truck's going to back down to go boating. It's people that may carry a kayak or carry something, which they do right now. The pathway is built, well, let me go back a little bit. We've had meeting after meeting of the public for a beachfront park, and we are implementing or trying to implement what the public wants. One of them was an access point to the beach. The only other one is Howe, Howe Drive West. So this is Howe Drive East. It's been planned for there, that's the easiest way to do it. It's called a ramp because it has to meet ADA access. I don't know how many people that have told me that live at the surf apartments can't get to the beach, and they want to walk down to the beach. That's what that walkway is. If somebody wants to carry a sailboard, they can't be stopped. It's not a boating ramp. It's not a boating ramp. So get the word ramp out of there. It's only called a ramp because that's what ADA calls it. And we've told people over and over again, like with our dog park, we don't have the money as a city to fund that, so a group is coming together, private group, to try to raise the money. Here, we have a chance to get over $400,000 in a grant to help build this. Otherwise, we couldn't do it on the city funds because we don't have it. So this is applying for the grant. So we're not putting the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, rather, and because the, because the hearings are not done yet, the time period, it's because we have to apply for the grant. If we get the grant, we don't have to accept it. We don't even know if we're going to, if we're going to get it. But there's a time period to apply for that grant, and it came up, and they give you a short time to apply. So it's not a boating ramp, it's a walkway that's ADA accessible. And if anybody wants to walk down there with a kayak that they carry over their shoulder, they can do that now. There's nothing against that. And I agree, I wouldn't go to Elk Creek. We all know it's polluted. When birds land there, they have a chance of getting very sick and dying. It's been polluted for years. Friends of Del Nord has been trying to get the California Wildlife, or whatever they're called now, to come and clean out that creek. They won't do it, they don't have the funds. It's a polluted creek, very dangerous for birds to land there. So it's not a healthy creek, it's a dying creek. Many, many people have said that over and over again. So that's not where I would go if I was going to kayak. I might use that pathway, but I'd go to the right to the bay. But that's what it is. It's not a boat ramp, it's a pathway, and it's for our ADA accessible people and elderly people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ania. Ms. Strong, you have something to say?
We're talking about birds, not horses.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that with you.
Thank you.
Just kidding. So I think applying for the grant is a great idea. I, I'm glad you clarified the boating ramp, it's, it's access for non-motorized types of boats like kayaks and...
And that's a good point, because a windsail is classified as a non-motorized boat. I mean, it's surfboards, it's windsails, it's, it could be a kayak.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so thank you for clarifying that it's not an actual boat ramp where you would drive a truck down and, and, okay. So the other thing is that I felt like Mr. Strong kind of contradicted himself in saying that it wouldn't be good to have pedestrians go down there, but at the same time, you said it's one of the most popular birding areas that we need to protect so people can go down there. So I actually think that the birding, bird watching in this area is phenomenal, and that is something that I have brought up throughout our public meetings. And we have had at least four public meetings about this project prior to this ever-moving forward. So I think that bird watching has been labeled in the thought process, so I just wanted to mention that. And that's it, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Other council members?
I wanted to take recognition of the, the letter that we received from the Friends of Del Nord and also from Pat Grady. I'll address Pat's first. He, Pat mentioned that...
Pat's a she, just so you know.
She, I meant. I was, was the graphic designer for the Red Coast Bird Trail brochure, and that is a beautiful brochure, and so I wanted to thank Pat for that. I think it was, it was beautifully done, and it really highlights the birding opportunities in, in the county. And again, it's not really a boat launch, and I, I don't know, I walk down there every day, literally, every day. And I don't think that the area right at the mouth of Elk Creek is where people are going to want to take their windsurfboards or their kayaks. It's, I see a lot, lot more activity out in the, the big part of the bay where I've seen people with surfboards and paddles out towards the pier. I've seen windsurfers that, it's kind of too shallow to get too close when, if you're trying to, you know, I don't, I've never seen a boat there unless it was one that got washed ashore because of a storm, which we had happen, but people don't really boat in that area because it's not exactly deep enough. And so I'm not really concerned about it being high activity for boats, and I do want to protect the birds. As I said, I walk down there every day, and I'm saddened and alarmed not to see the pelicans like we had in, in years past. We used to see tons of them at the mouth of the Elk Creek, and then always the cranes and great blue herons, and then the osprey way up there looking for fish down in the ocean. So I love walking down there. On days like yesterday, I saw a lot more people out there on both sides of Elk Creek. So that was kind of unusual, but I've even seen river otters in Elk Creek in the past, which is pretty phenomenal to witness, so I don't know if there's anything that can be done about, I'm not sure how polluted it is, but it would be nice to get that cleaned up. And I also wanted to acknowledge the Friends of Del Nord making recommendations for signage. We do have plans for signage throughout the park and throughout the city, as a matter of fact, so we know that that's something that we need, and we are working on that. And maybe some more educational kiosk about birds in, in the long Beachfront Park would be nice, too. So we do have an opportunity to go before the Planning Commission. I don't know if these alleviated your fears or not, but I appreciate you being here and sharing, sharing your input and your concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Gastman?
Yeah, I too walk down there pretty much every day, and, you know, there's a bigger problem down there besides bird watchers and birds. There's the homeless problem. I mean, there's a, a group that are down there all the time in that area, and if we develop this area for its better access to the public, it will make it a more uncomfortable spot for them to be in, and it'll make it better for everybody. More people down there will move them out of that area where they build their teepees, they leave their garbage. Everything that you see floating out of Elk Creek comes from those people living in those areas there. I would like to see the Friends of Del Nord help us get them out of there and make that a more pristine spot. That'd be an excellent thing, your talents to... That'd be an excellent thing, your talents, to get down there and maybe help these people get out of these pristine spots. The more that we have development down there, the more people enjoy the spot and I'm all for this project.
Thank you. I just have actually one question. It may seem like a naive question, but I have a hard time understanding where Elk Creek leaves off and the harbor begins or vice versa. And it appears that most of this project is really bordering the harbor and, see, I think of Elk Creek as being that area beyond that turn, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the biggest things we have is our natural beauty and we want to enhance the area and we want to try to get more people to come down there and enjoy it. I guess my mind, I'm thinking either birders are coming down there to have picnic benches and areas set up for people to be able to be there, to make it easier for them, a better opportunity.
Well, my only other comment is people will get onto the beach and I just, the risk of injury going over those jagged rocks is just too great. We need to have some entry points onto that beach. And that was very clear in our meetings, that that was a high, high priority of the community.
Yes, and it moves forward. I mean, you know, obviously the project, it'll be engineered. I mean, it's going to be made safe and sound. If you look at the work we did down at Howl Park West, you know, originally that wasn't constructed that great and a lot of that collapsed in and so we went back and Public Works did a good job of actually looking at that project and building it the correct way by putting some neat footings in there and it held up quite well.
Yeah, I agree. I think the overall goal of making it more user-friendly to the community and pedestrians is exactly what we should be doing. So I would like...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to emphasize that this is not about committing yourself to the project. This project still has to go through the Planning Commission and you have to hear their advice. There's going to be an environmental document, which I understand is being presented to the Planning Commission as a mitigated negative declaration. There will be additional opportunities before the comment period closes for state agencies to weigh in. We don't know if there are going to be any state agencies weighing in, but it's possible. This is simply about making a future decision possible by setting up a funding opportunity, taking advantage of a funding opportunity.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other clarification necessary for the council or are we ready to call the question?
I would move to approve Resolution 2014-02, a resolution of this City Council for the City of Crescent City approving an application for land and water conservation fund, beachfront park coastal access and non-motorized boating trail project.
Second. Okay, it's a movement seconded to approve Resolution Number 2014-02. Any other further discussion?
Just one question. So we do have a letter from the Coastal Conservancy and so they've seen the proposed plan, is that correct?
Correct. Not only have they seen the plan, they've actually come out and visited the site.
Okay, so they know what we have in mind and they're supporting it?
Correct.
Okay. And then will the Coastal Commission, do we have to present anything to them?
Absolutely. This is 100% within Coastal Commission's permitting jurisdiction, so we will be applying to them for the coastal development permit if we actually move forward with the project.
So it'll be vetted if we move forward at that time?
Correct.
And then they have their chance to critique it and make recommendations?
Correct. It'll go through the whole process.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion by the council? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalhoub?
Yes.
Councilmember Anea?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastineau?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley.
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can just say, I'd like to thank Mr. Taylor for finding this grant.
Yeah.
It is very difficult nowadays to find any grants in the state of California and especially for us in Crescent City, one that's worth over $400,000 and for our community park. Isn't it 400? I read 400.
At total, it's 400. It's $200,000 committed from the Conservancy and we're asking for about, actually asking about $220 from parks. And if you read the report, we'll probably put in about 20 for some of the...
Two individual ones, yeah.
Correct.
And even if we don't get it, thank you for finding that and for bringing it to our attention.
And for creatively piecing those two sources of funding together. That's some good work. Okay, so, thank you. We look forward to good things coming out of that resolution. We'll move on to Resolution, entitled Resolution Number 2014-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City appointing representatives to represent and vote on behalf of the city at the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division Business Meetings and represent the city and vote at Division Legislature Committee Meetings. So, Mr. Plazzo, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah. Mayor, this is an annual resolution by the City Council to have your representatives at the Redwood Empire Business Meeting and Division Legislative Committee Meeting. They're concurrently on the same days. The schedule for this year are on Fridays, March 21st in Ukiah, May 16th in Fort Bragg and July 11th in Blue Lake are the dates. The bylaws for the Redwood Empire require the council to adopt this resolution. Last year's representatives were Councilmember Murray and Mayor Hawley. So I'd have the council discuss your appointments and recommend adopting the resolution.
Okay. Any questions about what's being asked? Okay. And interestingly, I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on that. I can't imagine there will be, but, okay, we'll bring it back to the council then.
So you're asking for someone to be appointed to vote, the same person for all three meetings, or can it be different people for different meetings? For instance, if the chamber does move forward with the economic summit on the 21st because I'm chairing it, I won't be able to go anywhere else, but...
Yeah, you need a representative for the business meeting and for the legislative meeting. Last year, Councilmember Murray was the primary representative for both business and legislative meetings and Mayor Hawley was the secondary for both of those. So, you know, I think there's one, the bylaws state that, you know, one voting member, you know, to vote on any of those items. So if one council member shows up, you're representative, they can vote on items.
My question would be...
I didn't really answer my question. Maybe I didn't state it very well.
Ask the question again.
Can we have a different member voting at different meetings?
You can. But I just want to remind the council that I'm going to be at all of these meetings.
Yeah, I was going to ask you that because you're the president.
Right.
You can vote, though, if we appoint you. You could still be a vote.
So I will be there regardless of if you want to appoint other people.
Okay, that's pretty safe then.
Okay.
Okay, I will say that as mayor, I intend to go to most of these meetings this year, so.
Good.
Yeah, I plan to go to one or two of them.
Could we have an alternate also then?
That's out of the resolution.
Oh, a second alternate?
The resolution is set up to have a primary and an alternate.
Yeah.
Appoint an alternate for the business meeting and the legislative committee and a secondary for both.
Can we have a second alternate?
Yeah, I guess you can add that to the resolution and I don't see why not.
It doesn't say that in the bylaws, is the only thing.
Okay.
The executive committee had a conference call this morning and we reviewed the bylaws, so I'm familiar with them.
Okay.
They're fresh in my head.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you can't go to the meetings, you just can't vote.
Well, I'll move then that we appoint Councilmember Murray as our members and she'll be there all the time and Mayor Hawley as the alternate.
Okay.
Okay, it's a movement seconded, that Councilmember Murray be the representative and I will be the alternate for this purpose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much for that honor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Legislative matters. Any legislative matters? Do you guys have any at this time? Okay, very good. Any other city manager report or city council directors?
Yeah, the city manager, you know, our crews are working very hard in completing some projects. Second Street Sewer Project is moving along. We are, you know, very thankful for the weather that we've been having, you know, for that project. We do need the rain, though. With that, we've had several openings, positions open and kind of take this time to, you know, do some, you know, public, I guess, education on what we either have or will be having open and if there's any interest out there. The first thing, you know, were lifeguards and we did hire eight lifeguards this, early this week. They're being trained and we should be back up to opening in the evenings, probably first of February or so. And I'll get some data out to the council on that. That means if there's other people interested in being a lifeguard, please contact us. Advertising for our housing authority inspector position, human resource manager position, lab tech position, operating and training for our sewer treatment facility and accountant. So if there's anybody out there that is interested in any of those positions, please contact our HR department.
Okay. Great opportunity. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to reports, concerns or referrals from the council. Catherine, do you have anything for us?
Let's see. The RDA Oversight Committee Meeting was canceled on the 8th due to no actionable items. And then on the 9th, I attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting where we identified, re-identified our top priorities, which we, the commission as a whole voted for the Fred Hite Drive to maintain that priority. And then that afternoon, I met with our city manager and our finance director and Susan Dolderi and Janine Gallatioto regarding the BACRA finances and what we're doing to help bridge the financing gap. Janine and Susan were approaching all JPA members to talk about the need to provide funding for the final mitigation fees for the RSA on the airport runway. And then the, let's see, I think that was, we celebrated, I hope everyone honored Martin Luther King Day yesterday and then we have the chamber dinner on Saturday night. And I had the executive committee meeting for the Redwood Empire Division this morning and we not only discussed the bylaws, we also discussed having a candidates forum for all the people who are running for office this year at the Ukiah meeting in March. So that's tentatively on the schedule for that and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anea?
I too attended the LTICO meeting for transportation and where Fred Hite Drive was, continued to be our top priority. It's been on that list for 12 years and there's not a lot of state money available right now. The, actually, I was invited and along with Councilmember Murray, we met State Senate candidate Mike McGuire. He was in Crescent City last weekend and went to a meeting with him. He's running on the Democratic side for state senator. That, our current state senator Nielsen, he moves to a new district in November. So Mr. McGuire is a Board of Supervisors member from Sonoma County. Prior to that, he was on the Heelsburg City Council and prior to that, at age 19, he was on the school board in Heelsburg. And he is, we, Catherine and I both told him what we consider are very urgent matters for our city and our community and he was very receptive. It's interesting that he represents the rural area of Sonoma County, which includes the coast and is very familiar with coastal issues. And he will be coming to our community several times. In fact, he said he intends to establish an office here, his elected senator, and seems very concerned with our issue and is very well versed on it. So that was a pretty pleasant meeting. Also, later this week, I'll be going to Sacramento to my Public Safety Committee, which is part of the League of California Cities. We have several items on that agenda. One of the most important and still remains the most important after two years is realignment. And realignment being, two years ago, where the state is reducing the prisoners that it has in state prison and sending them to county jails, which fills our county jail just like Del Norte's full, and they have to take options on who to release. And what you don't hear a lot of is that crimes are not being committed by people that are released out of prison early. That's not true and you just have to read or watch the stations that'll tell you what's going on with that. And it's a very, it's a very serious consequence. So we're working on maybe trying to develop new laws to handle that, especially with county jails. So that's coming up later this week and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Shalhoub?
Thank you. So mostly involved with the chamber. The dinner is this Saturday at the Lucky Seven Casino and I heard that we're sold out, so that's pretty cool. We had our strategic board meeting that I facilitated for the Chamber Board of Directors last weekend and it was pretty fruitful and they continue to keep some of their main objectives as advocacy for all things that affect small businesses in Del Norte County and continuing to try to put together a plan for sustainability. So as soon as the plan is finalized, I'm sure that Jeff Palmer will come and make a presentation to the city. I can report that we have secured a writer's, an outdoor writers' conference that's going to happen here, I think in May of this year. And so we will have writers and bloggers from all over interested in the outdoors coming to our area, which is pretty exciting. The economic summit is coming up and now that I know that there's a conflict on that date, I'm not sure if that'll really be a big enough conflict for the chamber to change their date, but a tentative date right now is March 21st. But if that does, we'll firm that up in the next couple of weeks. So don't put it in writing yet. And then also, I just, we're going to, I think, Mr. Plazzo and I met the other day, we're going to convene our audit committee soon and so if you could reach out to Rick and I soon so we can get that process going. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gastineau?
Well, I was mayor there for a few minutes.
You did well, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, let's see, since the last meeting, I met with R3, the consulting firm chosen by the Solid Waste Management Authority, right before I did my first Solid Waste Management Authority meeting on the 8th. It was a very good thing. They just wanted to get information about what the stakeholders wanted in the, you know, what was going to, our thoughts about how the Solid Waste Management Authority is going to go forward and it was a very good conversation. And they're talking to most of the members of the Solid Waste Management Authority. I don't know if they're going to come back to the full council or the full Board of Supervisors for that yet, but that's still a discussion. And then we met with the Visitors Bureau today. We're talking about tourism a lot. The numbers are up, which is a great thing for our county to get more visitors. And then I've been working nonstop on the tsunami walking tour in tsunami safe week, which is happening in March from the 19th to the 26th and accumulates in the county-wide evacuation, tsunami evacuation, where everybody in the run-up zone will actually vacate their buildings and actually go to the places where they need to go to evacuation. I also gave a presentation on that at the chamber luncheon on the 10th and I will be helping with a presentation coming up to the Planning Commission on the 30th for the helping with a presentation coming up to the Planning Commission on the 30th for the tsunami walk artwork kiosk design. And then, I will be talking with you, the City Council, on the 3rd about the tsunami walk and the plans that we have for the downtown. So, that is growing. We do have an OES tsunami drill planning session on the 27th, and it's open to anybody who wants to come in and help volunteer or help out. Last one, we had 75 people. It's at noon on the 27th, Monday, at the Washington Boulevard Fire Station. So, if anybody wants to come out, help with the tsunami walk, tsunami thing. We have a tsunami surge fun run planned for the 23rd, which is Sunday. It should be a fun event for the whole family. Lots of that details will be coming out. So, but, we'll be giving a presentation here on the 3rd to the City Council.
On the 3rd of February?
3rd of February.
Okay, great. Because I, so you'll have a whole itinerary. I would like to invite the reporters from the Japanese newspaper that came up.
Oh, that'd be excellent.
And for them to join us for the activities.
I'll go ahead and send the council the preliminary itinerary.
Okay, so then I can email tomorrow Sanders, okay.
I'll have an updated one tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing? When you said fire department, it made me think of something I wanted to say. Rosalyn, who is the kind of office manager for Crescent Fire, is suffering from breast cancer. And so, a lot of the community members and our local firefighters are doing an event to raise money for her expenses, and it's called Firefighters for Rosalyn. And they're having a spaghetti feet and auction on Friday, February 7th, and I would just like to invite you all to attend.
Thank you.
I have one more thing.
Four to eight or something.
Four to eight, oh, it's an open spaghetti feet.
Can I add one more thing? We, our fellow council member from Blue Lake, Lanza Manzanita, had a very serious heart attack and then a series of mini strokes after. So, I thought it'd be nice if the council wished her recovery, and then she's hosting our Redwood Empire Division meeting in July, so keep her in your thoughts.
There's also, there's also a community cleanup of the cemeteries that's being organized that I was invited to. I think it's February 22nd on a Saturday. And permission, the permissions have been granted by two of the three areas of the cemetery behind Home Depot. So, I'll try to get more information on that. I just found out about it today.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, I think I'll talk just a little bit then. I too attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and much of that meeting had to do with the R3 consulting firm that we've hired. And in fact, I don't know if you said this, Ron, but there will be a meeting on January 28th at 5:30 PM right here in this building for the public to hear what's going on with R3 and what they're looking at, what their preliminary findings are. So, and for them to get community input in this process. So, that's an invitation to all of you who want to be there on January 28th. I attended the LTICO Meeting as well, and that was an interesting one, and the prioritization of the projects took a lot of that time. I also unfortunately had to, I didn't have to, I did attend the memorial services for Judy Wangren. For those of you who may have known Judy, Judy was, did food services and actually was a food services director in the recent past, and she worked for the school district for 33 years. So, she provided food for our schoolchildren for a very long time, and she'll be missed. So, that's all I had tonight. So, there being nothing else to come before the council, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Palmer's watching us, and he said their outdoor writers' conference is in late September, early October, so I got that month wrong.
She's still talking after the meeting's over, isn't that amazing?
You didn't adjourn.